Welcome, welcome, welcome. This is Accordian McCallus. And I went to a school board meeting in like the first time forever. I went to the McKinney ISD school board meeting. To find out what happened, join me on the podcast. If not, sorry. Well, that was about a brief intro as I could make. I think it didn't even break 20 seconds. So, long story short, this last election cycle, we were successful. We replaced two incumbents. With, I guess, the easiest way to combine them would be reform-minded individuals. And the school district was able to take one of their longtime employees and put him in on the school board. So essentially, the school board by my calculation sits five, one, and one. And then for whatever reason, the superintendent gets to sit up there with them. I don't know if he has a vote or not. Cause I, like I said, only been to one school board meeting in like forever. So, well, I got there, I gotta admit, I got there a few minutes late. You know, that whole work thing kinda got in the way. Employer expects you to get certain things done, you best get them done. So, I got there a few minutes after seven. They're already seated, they had started the meeting, and they started on time. Off to a good start. Uh, they have the comment cards outside. I didn't see any of those comment cards left. Now, that may be my own fault. I didn't go hunting and looking for them. However, when I saw what they looked like, and I saw that they were gonna have two opportunities for the general public to be allowed to address the school board, I thought I'd take them up on that. So I went back out and looked, and there were none left. Although there was one that was still on the table that was filled out. So I turned it in to the man at the back table. And he goes, "Well, you know, it's after the time limit and uh, you know, no guarantee." And I'm like, I said, "This isn't mine. I saw you didn't have any more out there anyway." So, I was just turning this in. So, question number one. Is this normal? That a school board would restrict the number of people that are allowed to speak? Particularly when it comes to budgeting items? Is this normal that uh, there is a cutoff on the time when you're allowed to speak? Now, I imagine they don't want people coming in, you know, two minutes beforehand, or running out in the middle and filling them out. I get that. But surely, there is, can't be a limit on the number of people. I mean, the general public are the taxpayers that pay for the school district. And they would like an opportunity to address the board that they elected or hired, if you prefer, to represent them. So they want that opportunity to speak on the issues that are pressing. So surely, surely, they're not restricting it to only eight or 10 people speaking. That can't be right. Now, now the time limit thing, I'm a little more iffy on that. You know, if the meeting starts at seven and you go and pull the sign up sheets at 7:30, nah, I get that. I mean, you'd been running for half an hour. You don't necessarily want people to show up a half hour late. And so I don't, I don't necessarily know all the details there, but that would be interesting. That would be very helpful to have that be public knowledge that this is the cutoff for the opportunity to speak at the school board meetings. You must be there no more than 10 minutes or 15 minutes after the start time. Fill out your sheet for your comment card and turn it in. And oh, by the way, we're only gonna allow the first 10 people to speak, which again, I can't believe that's accurate. But because I didn't pay close enough attention, I don't know 100% for sure, but I will be watching. So while I'm sitting through this, they're reviewing budgetary items. And they're talking about, based upon percentages, how McKinney ISD is nominally better than the state and the other districts that are, I guess, grouped together. Well, that's all well and good. But if somebody has a budget of a couple hundred million dollars, and somebody else has a budget of say, $20 million, those percentages are gonna be grossly different, right? So I'm not really sure putting those numbers out as a percentage of the total budget is necessarily a fair, accurate representation of what's going on. Now, if you were to combine averages of like school districts, then, then I would, I would be more inclined to say, okay, we've taken the 20 school districts that are most closely uh, like ours with the demographics and general size of students. And we've taken their averages and determined our average versus that. That makes sense to me. That seems like a, you know, an apt comparison. That sounds appropriate. But comparing it to the entirety of the state, wow, that's kinda ludicrous. Although I will, I will say that the percentages were all generally within a couple of percentage points. So to act like you're a hero because you're half a percent less than the average, I'm not sure I'm buying it. I, it sounds good, it looks good. And I don't begrudge them that job. I mean, they have to sell the idea that they're not being wasteful. They have to sell the idea that they're being fiscally prudent. And maybe they are. I, I don't work for a school district. I don't run a school district. I do wonder, you know, if those are the accurate numbers? If the publicly known numbers are real and accurate, that I have questions about. Once, I had heard that there's a good possibility that every level of government actually runs two books. The books they show the general public and then the real books. I don't know if that's true or not. I, I'd hate to think that the entirety of government is run like the mafia. But yeah. You know, when criminals make the laws, what can you say? In addition to that, while I, while I'm sitting through the school board, it looked as if questions were discouraged. It looks as if they didn't really want any of the other school board members to seek clarification. I mean, just the tone and the looks. I mean, granted, I was, you know, probably 75 feet away, so I couldn't see clearly their faces. But they kinda looked a little testy or annoyed in what my interpretation would be. So I found that kinda interesting. Because, again, it's a school board meeting. There's at least three new members, and they might just wanna understand some things a little better. One of those things would be this Esser money, right? Now, don't ask me to tell you what Esser means, cause quite frankly, I didn't look it up and I don't care. All I can tell you is the federal government apparently has decided to take some of the government, or take some of their government money, which would be taxpayer money seized from people that actually work for a living to disperse to others. Or it could just be stuff they borrowed, which is even worse, because then they're gonna take it from our children and our grandchildren. But I digress. So they are talking about this windfall of money that's gonna be coming in from the feds. And how are they gonna spend the money? And what are they gonna apply it to? And this is the crux to the matter. You don't ever get money from the feds, or even the state for that matter, without some form of strings. Now, the, I guess, deputy superintendent was testifying and basically said, hey, well, the original had six pages. And it didn't really look like there was a lot of strings or requirements, so of course we went for the money. But unfortunately, now that has grown up to be a couple hundred pages worth of stuff. So at that point, a number of folks had brought up the, I should say, at that point, they've acknowledged that they don't even know what all the requirements and what all the strings are. In fact, they couldn't give an answer. And when somebody clarified, well, can you tell me what's in there? They didn't have an answer. Now, first and foremost, if you're gonna give a presentation about money that you're getting, you probably oughta know what, I don't know, some of the requirements are. I don't expect you to know all the requirements, but maybe bullet points. You have to do this, or you have to do that, or you can't do this, or you can't do that. But to have no answer, and then to basically play it off like, well, you know, it's always changing. We don't really have any ideas what's all in there, but you know, it's nothing to worry about, no big deal. Yeah, I'm not buying it. I kinda sound like, in my head, that somebody just doesn't wanna give an answer. Somebody's afraid to give an answer. Or quite frankly, there is the distinct possibility that person just doesn't know. And I don't know which is worse. You got a guy that is dumb, which I'm not, I highly doubt that's the case. You got a guy that's incompetent, which, again, I highly doubt the case. Or you got a guy that's just flat out lying. And I, and I don't wanna believe that's the case. And, you know, politicians, political people, they dance around the truth all the time. I mean, it's part of life, right? You don't necessarily wanna tell the exact truth, all the truth, all the time. That's, that's a common frailty of humans. But when you're asked direct questions, and you don't even give an answer, and then somehow that's okay. You know, so the school board president just like, yeah, we're done with that. Ah, we don't have any more questions. Ah, don't worry about it. Really? That's it? So the underlying principle here is, again, when you get money from the feds, or even the state, there are strings and requirements and hoops that you have to deal with in order to get that money. So to get asked about that, and then claim there's none, or none that you're aware of, and then you have several people get up and testify about problems related to critical race theory. Okay, now, you ask, how are those two things put together? Well, normally McKinney ISD would like to say, well, we don't teach those things. We don't, we don't, we don't utilize critical theory, right? We're not gonna use communist indoctrination, communist propaganda as part of our teaching form. We don't do that here. But you throw that little race term in there, and now it becomes about equity, and it comes about diversity, and it becomes about, you know, acceptance. So, they morph it, and they hide it. And they put it in curriculum, uh, as a subject within the curriculum of the subject that's being taught. So for instance, they may stick it into math. They may stick it in to language. They may stick it into reading. They may stick it into art. There's so many different places they can plug this in, and you can't ever find it. It's like playing whack-a-mole with your children's education. So if you're going to utilize government schools, you shouldn't be surprised that government teaches them what government wants them to know. And as a parent or a grandparent, and you show up before the school board and you ask them legitimate questions. Are you going to be teaching this stuff? Because we think this stuff is divisive, this stuff is destructive, this stuff undermines those great strides we've made in the United States, particularly Texas in the last 50 or 60 years. I could see why there'd be a lot of people concerned about that. And I was quite frankly surprised that they couldn't give a better answer. And then they just brushed it under the rug. In fact, it was so bad that after they broke from the public meeting, and I'm jumping ahead, but if you'll just bear with me. When we broke from the public portion of the meeting, uh, one of the school board members was yapping at the heels of one of the people that spoke on it, claiming that we don't have CRT, there's no CRT, this, there's such thing, you know, going on and on and on about no CRT in the school district, or no CRT is being taught. And I have my doubts that this person even understands what that all involves, or grasps the concept that they changed the terminology to sell it. That they, they mask it behind something else. I, I don't know that this person grasps that. And that's kinda disturbing, because this person's on the school board. You would think they have a workable idea of what education is and what's involved with it. And I, I'm not sure that you need to be a former educator, but certainly it would be helpful to at least have studied this subject, or maybe taught classes, so you have a grasp of what's involved with it. Whether it's, you know, Sunday school, private school, government school, whatever. Maybe somebody's got that scope of understanding, or, or maybe somebody's been a project manager or something. So these are all useful things, right? That you can apply towards the school board and looking at things. I mean, just like you might want somebody that was an accountant that can actually read and look at the numbers that they're giving you, or maybe a statisticians that says, hey, um, yeah, that's all well and good that you showed us these percentages, but what are you basing that off? And what do you, what's your criteria? And what are you comparing it to? And, you know, I understand that's the median for the state, but the reality is, is we have a different statistical grouping that we should be using in order to get an accurate understanding where exactly we stand. You know, and these are just a few things I remember from a statistics class I took about, not quite 20 years ago. So, it's frustrating to me that the people that are running the school board, who are supposed to be directing the school district, who is supposed to be educating the children that we allow to go there, seem to not quite grasp what's going on. And maybe I'm being harsh. Maybe I'm not being fair. Maybe there's a difference of opinion. Uh, maybe it was a bad night. I, I don't know. But it was just kinda frustrating. So we go to all the trouble in the, you know, McKinney ISD to get some new representation, and I, I hate to say it, but it's likely gonna be one or two guys questioning things ever. And sooner or later, they're gonna probably get the message, "You need to shut up." Well, that's not the way it's supposed to be, right? There's supposed to be minority rights. There's supposed to be representation. There's supposed to be a general understanding of what's going on. So, one of those three people was my friend. I got, we helped get my friend elected to the school board, and he serves there. And, um, you know, to some degree, what happens on the board is gonna stay on the board. But when they come up with some crazy stuff, I expect they're gonna be able to ask about it and at least get an understanding. Hey, you guys did this thing that looks really crazy to me. Can you explain maybe what they were thinking? Now, again, I'm only talking to one person, right? And obviously, that one person can't represent the entirety of the school board. But that one person can give you their understanding of events, and perhaps help you either say, okay, well, that, I guess that makes sense. I don't agree, but I guess it makes sense. Or maybe you say, "That's just ludicrous. How did you go along with that? What, what was, that's stupid." I mean, maybe those are, those are all equally valid outcomes of this conversation. But up to this point, we're not really getting any of that. We're basically told that, "Don't worry, the experts are in charge. We know what we're doing. Don't worry your pretty little head." Yeah, it seems to me you've heard a lot of that the last 15 months, and how's that worked out for us? Well, the experts are in charge. They say you need to do this. They say you need to do that. And yet, here we are, still trying to get out from under the thumb of government overreach. So, I guess to sum it all up, most of the school board meeting was rather dry, and I can see why there's not a line of people going there. Some of the school board meeting was interesting, and they were talking about the amount of money they're going to be spending, and they're projecting uh, what's gonna go forward. And while we're on that topic, just if I may briefly, they expect that even though they had a unforeseen reduction in enrollment, that all, the vast majority of those students are gonna come back. In fact, they're budgeting as if they're going to come back, all of them. But I wonder, is that really likely? Now, for budgeting purposes for the following year, I, it's a very conservative view. Look, worst-case scenario, all the students come back. Well, we need to make sure we have the funds set aside for that. I get that. I really do. But do they really think the school district's gonna continue to grow like it once did? Do they really think that people haven't figured out that, you know, if we're gonna have kids sitting at home watching TV to get their education, why don't I just do something online? That I can do for a fraction of the cost or time, or maybe has better educators or better content? You know, I mean, there's homeschooling, there's all sorts of different private schools, some online, some live, uh, some in person. You know, it would seem to me that the school district would have a vested interest in saying, hey, look, we know we kinda dropped the ball this last year. We, we acknowledge, we, we were not prepared and we let you all down. But this is the first time we've ever been asked to do this. You know, the governor kinda mandated this. It caught us all by surprise. We had no way of knowing this was gonna happen. But this is what we've learned from it, and this is what we're planning on doing next time around. I didn't hear or see any of that. Now, it may be out there. It may be that they're still working on it, and they don't have that answer. I would think that, you know, one of the first things they would roll out is, hey, this is the results of the SWOT analysis that we did on the school district this last year for 2020, 2021. And uh, this is what we found. These are the things that we can do differently. These are the things that we can improve. And by doing that, it's either gonna impact the budget this way or that way, and we found that we can move this or move that. And, but I really didn't hear that. Now, one thing I did, did see and hear, which was, I don't wanna say impressive, but it was interesting, is they talked about getting a generator for like a hundred and, I don't know, $50,000 or whatever installed, including a little fenced-in area around it and whatever else, at one of the schools. Because that school serves as like a node, if you will, for the network for a bunch of other schools. Now, I'm assuming that this is a retrofit. In other words, they weren't doing this program when they built that school. And even though they routed all the network through that school, they hadn't, they hadn't thought that through earlier on. I mean, cause technology's changed extremely rapidly in just the last 20 years. So I don't fault them for that. I, I appreciate the fact that they actually said, hey, you know what? We found that we really need to have this expense dealt with, and we're gonna do this. And if we can get, you know, like I said, I don't remember the exact number. Let's just say $150,000. This is a nice round number. But we're gonna install this. We're gonna have it all prepped and ready to go. And this, that's it. You know, our backup plan. Okay, I get it. One of the things that I would question is, is what kind of fuel are you gonna use? Are you gonna run it off natural gas? Are you gonna run it off diesel? If you're gonna run it off diesel, are you gonna have a storage tank on site? If you're gonna run it off diesel, you know, what kind of precautionary measures are you gonna take? Now, I assume they're gonna run it off natural gas, cause it doesn't make sense to run it off of anything but natural gas. Being that that's the most stable form of energy delivery, and it's also the most cost-effective 90% of the time. It's just a certain amount of irony to me that we seem to be a little behind the curve on that. That being said, you know, I could probably use a generator too, but at a thousand bucks for a portable generator, man, I just, I gotta justify that cost. Not there yet. Should be, but I'm not there yet. So, I guess the final analysis is, if you have children in the school district, any school district, not just McKinney ISD, if you're in Frisco, Allen, you know, Grapevine, Colleyville, Garland, right? Carrollton Farmers Branch, Sherman, whatever. If you're, if you're in one of those school districts, how hard is it for one night a month, go put in two hours, go sit there and pay attention to what's going on? And you know what? And if it's more than that, you get your friend, get your neighbor. Hey, can you go sit through this? You know, a lot of this stuff is now recorded and put up, so you can watch it. Certain, you know, laws requiring public meetings and reporting. So that's an opportunity too. The reason being is, there are all these things going on that we just don't know about. Because we're so busy and we, life's so crazy, that you can't keep track of everything. And, and just as a secondary note, I gotta find it just a little interesting that the school district has their school board meeting on the same night that the city council meeting's going on. I try not to read too much into that stuff. I, I really do. But it's almost as if they want you to not be able to participate. And, and again, I'm not suggesting that's exactly what's going on. I mean, everybody has their lives. Everybody has things going on, even the people that serve. And, you know, and again, I've talked about this before, and I wanna be very fair to these people. Every one of these individuals that serves, whether it's city council or school board, really doesn't make any money at all off the deal. Right? I think city council maybe makes a couple thousand dollars over the course of the entire year, if that. And the school board probably makes zip zero nada, except for the, I think they have a nice little suite at the football stadium. But I couldn't be wrong about that. So, right? So it's a volunteer thing. It's people that are passionate about this stuff, or interested in about this stuff, they do that. Or at least that's what we're told. That's what we believe. But I wonder if it isn't also just, just a little bit of ego and a little bit of desire to control, and maybe just maybe a little bit of manipulation in place. Local government's supposed to be local. And when that same local government does everything in their means to prevent actual local people from being involved, that oughta be a giant red flag for you. That oughta be a great big concern. So even if you're not super concerned about yet another apartment complex being built in the city of McKinney, you might wanna go pay attention once a month, or once every other month at the city council meetings. Even if your kids are all grown and on their own, someday you may have grandchildren, or your friends' children or grandchildren that go into McKinney ISD. And you maybe wanna know what they're doing there. It's not like they make this stuff readily available and fully understood to the general public. It, it's like they're running their own little quiet operation that they would rather we know nothing about. And quite frankly, as a government institution, that is the exact opposite of how that's supposed to be. In fact, we're supposed to be in charge. We're supposed to be in control, which is why we elect our representatives to go speak for us and guide and direct what the school district does. Yet they really don't. There's a lot of influence and input from the state level, less so the feds, but the feds are involved too. And while in Texas, they may be called independent school districts, the reality is, it's all about the money. And Texas controls the majority of the money. And that's kinda on purpose. That's so they could take away the local control. Yet, we're all okay with it. Why? For reasons I don't understand. That's why. We were okay when they took and seized the money down in Austin to then resend it back out to various other cities and ISDs. And along the way, they took their cut. Now, if you're really concerned about your local schools, you oughta be ending that. As a matter of fact, if you call yourself a conservative, you oughta end that. If you call yourself a constitutionalist, you oughta be really concerned about that. The states may be there to guarantee that they have government schools, but the state shouldn't be funding them flat out. Pretty sure that's not the game plan. Certainly not originally. If you live, if you live in a school district and 60% of your funding comes from the state, who do you think that school district's gonna listen to? The locals, or what the state says? There you go, folks. I rest my case. If you want local control, you have to assert local control. You do that by finding good people to run and good people to represent you, and people that are willing to ask questions, and people that are willing to put their foot down and say, "Yeah, no." People that are willing to tell the state, "Yeah, that's all fine and dandy, but no." People that are willing to tell the feds, "Yeah, we just don't wanna participate in that." That's what I think we need to look for. We need to find people that are gonna represent us, not the developers. That are gonna represent us, not the people that build new schools. The people that represent us, not some group that seeks to benefit from the expansion of the government school system, whether it's the NEA, the AFT, or whatever local organization sits in their stead. Perhaps we'll talk about term limits, or mandatory retirement for certain roles. I mean, if we're gonna get saddled with people for 20 and 30 years representing us, what are the chances they actually know what's going on, or that they've paid attention? I'm gonna think it's pretty slim. Now, some of them, particularly like in Congress, you know, they have a staff that keeps them up to speed. But the reality is, is if you got somebody on a school board, and they've been there forever, they're not keeping up with the technology. They're not keeping up with the changes. They don't follow or understand the social mores as they adapt, generationally speaking. If I have somebody pushing 80 years old, are they really the best person to represent the school district? Now, they may have the time. They may be highly qualified. But if their best frame of reference is stuff that happened in 1980, I beg to differ. The world's changed a whole lot since then. The technology is different. The mores are different. The culture is different. The ability and access to information, or the ability to access information is entirely different. We need people that understand that, not people that, eh, we like this person, so we're gonna let them do this. eh, we like this person, so we're gonna let them do this, or we think this is a good program, so we're gonna do this. I'm sorry, that's just not good enough. Take my advice. Get two or three of your friends. Decide amongst yourselves, every month, let's go to a school board meeting. You can go this month, I can go this month, or we can go together. And then when it's done, we can go out and have a drink and discuss what happened. Not specifying adult beverages, just a beverage of choice. And talk about it. What do we see? What did we hear? What are they trying to do? What did you think about this? And I'll go you want better. Put that information out to the general public. Let that be known, shed light on it. There should be no reason that we don't have a good way to communicate what is exactly going on in our school district. To all the people that pay for it. Well, folks, that is according to Callis. I will see you on the other side. Oh, and yes, I know it's Wednesday. But you can't very well do this podcast at ten o'clock at night when you're supposed to be getting ready for bed. So if you'll forgive me that I'm a day late. Thank you. Have a good night.